Okay, we'll open the meeting up to public comment. I feel like we have a large crowd for public comment. Okay, we'll move on. Tonight we have a couple of special presentations and the board is very excited to hear who our student of the month are and who is going to be some of the recipients of special recognition. So we'll start with the elementary schools, Joel.
All right. Well, thank you for having us back this month. I talked about this young lady last month, so I'd like to recognize Quinn Aaronholz, one of our second graders. I told you last month all of the details about her hard work and the fundraiser we did. We're raising over $1,400 for St. Jude's, spearheaded by Quinn herself coming to PTA, making a presentation to the group and getting PTAs behind that project. So I know she's very excited to possibly have your support next year as she takes it to a larger venue. So Quinn, if you can come on up sweetheart. Mrs. Sickles and I would like to... Mrs. Sickles, we'd like to give you this certificate. You can hang it on your bedroom wall, all right? We're gonna get a nice picture here. We're so proud of your hard work sweetheart.
One more, take one more.
That's the most important one. All these other ones are just for the family.
Thank you.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Quinn, on behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to personally thank you for your time in working very hard in raising money for St. Jude's. We can't thank you enough for all the hard work that you put into it. And we'll do whatever we can to help you along. And hopefully you can expand this through the middle school and high school in the years to come and raise a lot more money. So, thank you very much.
That's awesome.
Great job.
Say it again, Joel.
Young man.
Oh, Dan.
When we began thinking about the idea of a student of the month for the middle school, we went back to our theme for the year, which is kindness. And actually on Friday, we have our Diversity Day and the theme for our Diversity Day is kindness. So we started thinking about kindness and what it means. And I started asking around. I went into the guidance office and I go, "We're thinking about a student of the month." Do you... anybody comes to mind? And the first words out of one of my guidance conferences was, "Brody Lutz, he's so kind." Right? We see him in the hallways helping other kids if they drop their books. We see him helping at their lockers. And one time I received a call from mom. He came home, he was concerned about a kid who needed help and he didn't know how to do it. He asked his mom to help out. And so that... And when you're in a middle school every day and you can see the behaviors that some kids can engage in, sometimes it's hard to step up and just be kind. It seems like it shouldn't be, but students like Brody really help us put that forward. So, Brody, come on up. Congratulations. We'll get pictures. Thank you.
Good job, Brody.
So Joel will appreciate it.
So I'm actually presenting for Mr. Zimmer and Mr. Judge today. Just through a strange set of circumstances, Mr. Zimmer is actually at the airport in Orlando waiting to come home with the seniors for the senior trip. And Mr. Judge had a prior commitment uptown tonight. So they asked me if I would present the high school student of the month award. Unfortunately, I don't know Alexis Lady well, but I definitely want to congratulate her. Mr. Zimmer left me some notes. Alexis is a student at the Alster Bocie Career and Tech Center. She is... I don't know if it says what program, right Alexis?
Culinary.
In the culinary program. When Mr. Zimmer asked some other people in the building about Alexis, Mrs. Driller, who is her art teacher, said that she always does extra work without being asked. She helps others, she's kind and humble. She is one of the superstars of the Highland High School art world. And Mr. Sargent, our security person at the high school, he says that Alexis is fun and engaging to talk to about a variety of issues, including movies and books. I often look forward to Alexis checking in with me daily so we can chat about current events, especially about recent superhero films. So those are just two people in the building who think Alexis is a great addition to our student body and to Highland High School and very excited to give Alexis the first student of the month in the high school this year.
Thank you.
Perfect.
That's great. Congratulations.
Mr. President, if I may, so it's a tough world today that our students are growing up in. Certainly we hear about terrible things happening and unfortunately again, something terrible happens. So to hear the theme of kindness in each of the speeches by the principals really goes a long way. So each of you, doesn't matter your age or size, is displaying kindness and you serve as a great example to the rest of the student body. So thank you very much and on behalf of the school district or myself, I also congratulate you. Great job.
Okay, we'll move on to acceptance of reports. We resolve the Board of Education upon the recommendation of superintendent improvement and knowledge reviewing the following reports. Our Board of Education meeting minutes, attendance enrollment, February 2018.
I know they have a lot of homework in there.
Okay, we'll continue. Our treasures report for February 2018, our general fund for February 2018, our school lunch fund, our special aid fund, and our capital fund. Motion please, motion by Tom, second.
Second.
Second by two. Discussion. Good?
Yes.
All in favor? Close, so carry.
I'm gonna have to stay for the board minutes. Just for the board minutes.
Board minutes. Okay, our principals' reports, Joel.
Happy spring.
Does Mother Nature... Will someone tell Mother Nature please?
Yeah, Mother Nature is not cooperating, right? Just a couple of updates. If you did not get out to our two scholarship concerts, I'd love to just acknowledge our music department. Both the band and the choruses, they were spectacular as they always are. This year they were, I think, just even a step above what they've done in the past. Last night's was blew people away. So lots of great comments as parents were leaving, so just a shout out to them. And then I just want to acknowledge Mrs. Sickles with her work with our PTA with a library card-a-thon. We're supporting the new library in town. So parents as reading partners is gonna be starting up soon. One of the things that she's working on, she has a meeting this week, is to try to get a library card into the hand of every elementary student. So those are just a couple of updates since the report. I did call register this morning to get updated kindergarten numbers. She did not get back to me before I left my office tonight, but those numbers are expected to go up. There've been many phone calls, but people haven't come in to get those packets yet. So we encourage them to please come get those packets so that we can get students registered and ready for screening appointments in May. Pretty much all I have. It was a short month since the last time I was here with all the snow days, so... Any questions? Okay?
Thanks Joel.
No snow?
You said go snow?
No snow. Go snow, yeah, go away snow.
It's going sound.
I hope.
Good evening, everyone. Briefly about Diversity Day on Friday. Michael Hind, county executive, will be there from 8:00 to 8:15. If you want to come over and hear what he has to say. And then Michael Fallon.
Fallon.
Fallon is... who's supposed to be a very dynamic speaker, will be in front of the entire school body beginning at 8:25 talking about stereotypes. And the title of his presentation is "You Don't Know Me Until You Know Me." Right?
You don't know me until you know me.
Okay, got it. So then we're looking forward to that and then we have a whole day planned afterwards, so... And I did say in my report that I'd be discussing a little bit about the Thinking Project. I brought copies. If you don't have them in front of you on your... anybody need a copy, you want to look at?
I'll take one.
Not gonna spend a lot of time, but I can go over briefly. There was a question last time about it and I said I'd bring it back. So, start with the last page if you would, which is the rubric that we use to grade the Thinking Project. This is right off the state website, first of all. It's not something we've created. It's right from the state website. So it's evidence-based writing and you can see the scores go... We added the zero column because we did have kids that were, when we first introduced, were not giving us a claim at all. So we added zero, so and you can see it goes up to four. All right? And if you just take a second to look at that, you can see that... And if you score one, contains a minimal claim that is not beyond correct literal repetition. So in a literal claim, a student is taking something they read directly and making that their claim. Okay? If you go all the way up to four, contains a clear compelling claim. So they're... in that case, they're synthesizing information and coming up with their own idea and stating a claim about what they've read. Okay? So if then you look at the scores and if you look at sixth grade, you can see, if you look all the way to the left, you can see content analysis and average command of evidence. Those scores that you see are average scores of every student who took the test. So if you look at the sixth grade project results from September 2017, average score of content analysis, 1.14, meaning the... when we scored all of those, they came out with an average somewhere just above a literal claim.
Can we say the same children?
And I'm sorry, repeat that. Yes. Then this is the sixth grade again takes the test and now you can see how the averages jumped.
Okay.
Okay? Now, sixth graders haven't been exposed to this before, so we would expect there'd be some really strong growth. If you look at seventh grade, we didn't see as strong a growth, but we... they have been exposed to it before. So we're... I would have hoped we would have started in a better place than we did, but we're still seeing progress. And then you can see the eighth grade scores as well are showing some dramatic improvement. Okay? The one thing I will note to you is that all three grades use the same rubric. All right? But to get a score, an eighth grader under command of evidence has to show three pieces of evidence. A sixth grader may need only show one. All right? So we do have different expectations at per grade level. All right? I know that's really fast, really brief. Does anybody have any questions about it?
No, I mean, I like the sound of the project and you're hoping this translates into what at the middle school?
We're hoping...
Much deeper thinkers.
Much deeper thinking. And let me... I'll give you a couple of examples. I think it... how... and one of the things I did want to say and I'm glad you had a question because it was almost wrapped up and I forgot to add, that in each classroom, we're doing something with this. We're doing it in different ways. In PE, you can see our PE teachers get a group of kids together and have them make a claim about how they're going to use these... this device. And four kids have to cross the gym without touching the floor using this device that you have to stand on. So they have to organize their thoughts, work together in a group, and how are they gonna get across the floor? And when they don't make it the first time, she brings them back and now they say, "Now, what evidence do you have? What didn't work, what did work, what didn't work? Make another claim. How are you gonna do it now?" In science, that claim is a hypothesis. What is your hypothesis? What's your evidence for doing that? Right? And we use it even more. I've heard Ms. Connors use it when she's working with kids who may have not engaged in appropriate behavior and said, "You made a claim about somebody, what was your evidence?" Right? And when they start talking about the evidence, they can get to a deeper thinking about why that was not an appropriate claim that they made. All right? So we're really working on thinking, not just on writing or responding to a prompt. It's really about much deeper. A lot of our assessments are going that way. The global tests at the high school is going definitely in that direction. Our science teachers are telling us the biology tests are going in that direction. So we're really on the right track.
And that was developed straight Common Core. I mean, that was one of the primary shifts in the Common Core ELA as well as the Common Core MAP.
Correct.
So if I'm a science teacher, a seventh grade science teacher, I'm going to give my students a Thinking Project in September of 17 and another project in February of 18 to measure their progress.
Correct.
Just once, one Thinking Project, and so all teachers are doing this.
What happens when we actually measure it as you're seeing recorded here? Is that first period, the students are given a... well, I'll call it a prompt. It's a reading selection. It's read to them because we don't want to test reading. We want to test their ability to synthesize information. And they're told to make a claim from that, what they read, and support it with evidence. That's the directions. They respond to it. I may have some in my bag, but I brought a couple.
Can they take notes while it's being read to them?
They absolutely can. We teach...
And they have the printed in front of them.
And they have the printed in front of them. And we suggest and we teach kids to what enclose reading techniques to make notes on the side as they read.
Start organizing information.
Right?
Can a teacher choose what day that they want to do this or is this scheduled?
It's a whole school.
The test, the assessment is actually scheduled, but the instruction goes through... As a matter of fact, they sit down with all three teams tomorrow and go through what strategies are in place to improve this as we go through instruction daily.
So it's one writing... it's much like our benchmark assessments. So the whole school essentially is doing it the same day, that one thing. And then, yeah, and then the each individual content area is reinforcing the vocabulary and the concept in their classes on a daily, you know, daily basis or hopefully.
One of the things it's done is it's solidified vocabulary across all content. I heard it in a social studies classroom the other day. A teacher was talking and having them go through deciding was Athens or did Athens have the better way of form of government or did Rome? And they had evidence in front of them and they had to decide which it was and make a claim. Right, okay? They had to make a claim and then she said, "And now I want your reasoning for that." And she said, "Look, now remember that reasoning is..." She used a different word, I'm sorry. She said, "Support that." And she was, "That's the same thing as the reasoning that you're using when you do evidence-based writing." So there... that conversation's going across all areas and the kids, you know, I'll go in and say, "So have you made a claim?" And they'll go, "Oh, really? You're gonna make us make another claim?" Right? Which is the middle school way of saying we're actually getting the message across.
Very good, thank you.
Mike, I have to say, we have better class today.
Since I've been to both cities, I would agree.
I did not mean to start any kind of...
I didn't expect it to go to be unchecked.
Of course.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Zimmer's report?
I appreciate Mr. Zimmer with the sophomore class visiting the Bocie programs. I appreciate him very much. And I hope the kids get a lot out of it too.
And I just want to congratulate both the middle school students and staff and the high school students and staff for last week and their little presentation regards to what's been going on in our schools throughout the nation. You know, a little moment of silence. I think it was done professionally.
Great job.
Well-respected and I want to congratulate both the students and staff for that. I mean, they did a really a great job, those presentations. Thank you to both high school and middle school. All right, Jody.
Just I'm gonna recap my report. Just I completed entering and analyzing the data for the middle school kindergarten, first grade, and third grade, the Benchmark II tests. I'm still waiting for tests from the other grade levels. There's a couple of classes here and there and some self-contained students where I haven't gotten their tests yet. And as soon as they're turned in, I'll continue to get the data out and get them back out to the teachers and meet with them. Bill and I have been meeting, we've met a couple of times in the last couple of weeks, reviewing the high school data and specifically looking at each student's credits and regions and making sure that they've got all the requirements. We also have been meeting about the algebra and the geometry tests. The state has... we're clearly seeing the state shift now from the 65 passing, which is what they always required, to now the college and career-ready 79% that they want from each student. So we're really kind of looking at that and we're going to have some meetings in the upcoming weeks with the math department to speak to them about it and, you know, brainstorm, see what we can do to get on the ball with this and moving. I also, to address Sue's concerns about the school board policies, since I've sent in the rest of the legally required school board policies to Sarah, who will then forward them on to the attorney. However, there are six remaining that are all special ed content. And so Patrick and I have scheduled to meet tomorrow to sit down with that and see exactly what's going on in his department before we, you know, turn in that whole policy. They're quite large and we want to make sure that they are all, you know, stuff that we're doing and that we need to tweak the language and everything. So those will be coming very soon to Sarah. I'll be sending those to Sarah relatively quickly. And that's kind of what I've been working on as Joel said, it's been a little short with all the snow days. Any questions?
I have questions about the policies. So there... those are board policies. What are the policies linked to? Like what are their titles?
The two policies that I sent in, let's see.
Well, the technology ones that we approved last year.
Yes, there was two of those.
There was also student access... oh, here they are. Student evaluation, that was one that we needed to put in there and required access to records, which is really like the foil. Those had to be in there. And then there's six left. It's like they're all related to students with disabilities. Confidentiality and access to IEPs, availability of alternative format.
So that's separate than our reviewing of all of Highland's policies and get those...
She's putting the ones that are...
These are ones that we need to have, but aren't currently part of our policy. They're kind of newer things that have gone out.
And that come through an eerie one analysis?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions for Jody? Thank you, Jody. Patrick?
So our weather, as Joel mentioned before, continues wreaking havoc on some of our scheduled meetings. I think our special ed cabinet was canceled for the third time so far. So we're hopeful to get them together after spring break. There's a lot of topics that everyone, all the members are excited to get working on. So we're hopeful to find a time to meet. I want to thank all the staff for all their flexibility with our annual review meetings. We've started them and we've already, you know, we've put out all different kinds of schedules in regards to our delays and early dismissals. And we really try to work around our family schedules as well because it's so important that they come and be part of these meetings. So I just want to thank all staff for being flexible as we get prepared for those. Our Special Olympics team has been meeting on Saturdays, putting in their required hours for practice before they can participate in the games. They are scheduled to participate in the actual games on May 5th at West Point. And a few weeks prior, they'll be having time trials that they have to do as part of the events as well.
Patrick, does she have people helping her finish her like she did last year?
Yeah, yeah. So she has a couple of volunteers, local trainers, a local police officers. She has a bunch of different individuals that are all...
Yeah, it was very interesting.
They meet every other Saturday. If you get a chance to, it's really such a positive environment.
Here in the high school?
Yeah.
In the gym? Oh, okay.
And hopeful we'll be able to get outside at some point.
Patrick, with the Anderson Center, is that something they do on a regular basis? That they'll come in and try to be helpful providing professional development?
It's actually kind of new. So some of these private sectors are trying to be proactive and trying to navigate some different areas that they can provide service rather than being just a placement. So they're coming and pitching to districts on services that they can come and provide to us. So it's professional development and other areas and they're trying to... And it's not just them, it's Aster, it's other places.
Oh, so it's more than...
Yeah, so I have meetings set up with a lot of these because they're all trying to pitch their services to us. And they're looking at areas that were not being addressed and that we're not getting in district or Bocie's or any other professional development areas around. So they're coming to us and asking areas of need and they're telling us what they're offering and their changes, so...
Will they be bringing their people in here to do so?
They kind of pitch whatever we want. So they're asking us, they'll say they'll come to us and provide...
The service.
Mini trainings, provide professional development on conference days. They'll provide after-school training, individual training. So they're all trying to reach an area... A lot of them are based around social emotional needs of students. As you know, we've seen, you know, a huge increase in that need across the board for all students. So they're trying to do their part in addressing it. And I was part of a mental health forum that I went to in December and they had a panel of a lot of these places. And what came out of it was that they needed to do a better job of reaching out to districts. And districts finding out the services that they offer because sometimes there's a disconnect in services that they used to offer and what they now offer. And how... what we need from them is changing. So they're trying to do their part to kind of bridge that gap a little bit better.
These we mentioned would be fee-based services?
Yeah, so they give... and they'll give different types of packages and they'll create packages based on our desires.
They're customized.
Yeah.
Patrick, in your report, you had noted the beginning of the planning for the extended school year. What is that timing usually run? How many weeks is that during the...
Extended school year is from, depending on the year, it's usually right around July 4th. It's six weeks. So that's for students that demonstrate severe regression. So sometimes it's a program, sometimes it's related services. It can be dependent upon what the student needs, but it's a six-week time this summer that's, uh, designated, uh, for students with severe aggression.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Patrick? Thank you, Patrick. Okay, under personnel, uh, does anyone have an issue with taking the personnel as a boss from A through E? Good. Page number motion, motion by Mike, second by Heather. Discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Yes, so, uh, Mr. President, I did, did wanna recognize that, uh, Nurse Lynn is here tonight and she has been doing a filling for quite some time. Uh, she has really captured the hearts of the students and the acting staff. I wanna thank them for their dedication.
Sizzle?
Sizzle.
Okay. We'll move forward to Dean. You're up.
Howdy. Um, I first wanted just to take a moment to, um, thank and sort of just appreciate, um, Mr. Heath because he, once he was always constantly planning a trip, um, for the school, um, the senior Disney trip, which they seem to be having a blast, they all seem to be having fun and, um, I came back with it, no, um, I can't go there's a board meeting.
Yes, he has humor also.
He's, um, you know, he's just always really planning a trip. Him and along with Mr. Stroh, they just really do a really great job with his new Disney trip. It's always a blast and it's just, um, nice of them to do all that work for our students. Um, and that also leads into, um, some conversations that we're starting to have now is, uh, abroad trips that we have each summer. In the summer of twenty nineteen, there's going to be a Greece and Italy trip. And then it also goes on like a three-day cruise, so it's like a cruise, but you get to visit like Athens and Rome. And then there's also... And then there's also a trip to Peru and South America. So those are really cool opportunities. I actually today was walking around and went to some English classes to promote the trip so that students know, you know, cool opportunities and take it on now is, you know, we don't all have those, um, chances later in life and this is a great time for, you know, a moderate, um, trip and very jam-packed with a schedule that you don't have to worry about planning yourself, it's all there for you, you just show you're with your friends. So again, um, thank Mr. Heath for putting those together as well. The next item is some other field trips that have happened. Uh, last, um, last week on the fifteenth, um, Interact visited the Castle, uh, Castle Point Veterans Hospital in Lough Enders. And this is one of, um, Mr. Mango's spearheads, this trip usually in Interact Club because it's just really near and dear to his heart because I believe his, um, grandfather served. And it's a really, um, important moment to go to the Castle Point and just thank the veterans that are staying there and living there and show some gratitude and, you know, just brighten up their day and, you know, visit with them and just, you know, talk about their grandkids because everything, you know, and the smiles and, you know, just keep them motivated and, you know, so it was really important and we always loved that trip, so I'm happy to do that once again. Um, the Fed Challenge trip had, um, the Fed Challenge had their, um, trip to Wall Street yesterday. Uh, we presented our economic forecast. We did not make it to the second round, but still it's a really cool opportunity to, um, learn about economics and be more involved in, you know, how economics play with politics and it's another awesome opportunity for our students. Then a trip that's coming up is the Varski Bas, baseball team has their trip to Maryland for their group, um... I'm not exactly sure, I think it's like they're playing, they have some games and matches, tournaments, some training and some, um... Yes, like a camp, so...
Calvert, is it Calvert camp?
Yes, it's Calvert.
So that's coming up, I think it's the end of this week that they leave for Maryland. Mald U N is still on their way with planning for our Hugman, um, conference at SUNY New Paltz on April fourteenth. In preparation, we're actually having like a little mini-mun this Friday with, um, some students from New Paltz. They're coming here, we're gonna have a little, um, mini-mun conference mock so we can get maybe some New Paltz students involved, so they have signed up to attend, but they really don't have a Mald U N program at, um, at New Paltz. So we're trying to encourage them to participate and hopefully, um, create one there. Peer Leadership has a game night scheduled for April thirteenth from six to eight PM in the cafeteria. Um, the French and Spanish honor society has their foreign language night coming up on April fifth from six to nine PM. It's a really fun night, we encourage, invite all of you to come. It's in the cafeteria and in a couple of classrooms. We have different skits of Spanish students and French students. We're doing a fashion show in the French club. So I don't know what I'm gonna wear, but it will be there. So we have that, we have all like lots of, um, delicious and culturally diverse foods from a lot of our students. We have a lot of different cultural backgrounds and we, you know, ask those students to bring in something from their, um, country of origin. So some students are Kenyan, some students are Nigerian, we have students from the Philippines, students from Malaysia, um, Italian, um, Indian, so Mex, Mexican. So we have a few, just to name a few. So we ask those guys to bring in something that, you know, is sort of, um, important to their culture and like a simple dish, so we're excited to have that. Mr. Heath will be making escargot, um, so we'll have another great foreign language night. We raise money to support all of our different, um, activities, um, such as just also even buying like the cords for graduation and the berets we give at French honor society and the sombreros they give at Spanish honor society induction ceremony. I wanted to also congratulate the band encorers having a success, su, su, excuse me, successful scholarship concerts this past couple of weeks. Also, I wanna take a moment to congratulate all of this year's top ten for the class of twenty eighteen and, um, give them a shout out for their accomplishments and their hard work.
Are you there?
He did.
And then, um... And then, thank you. Next, I wanna chuck about what, um, Mr. Brown brought up and just give some praise to Lily Ognotowicz, Jordan Reynolds, Julian Brennan and Alicia Wilk for organizing a peaceful, powerful, encouraging and important message at the walkout, um, last week in the gym A C M at that central school and they really left students with a message and they gave out a sheet, which I thought was really important because you can say so, have a message, but what are we gonna do to act on that? And they gave you phone numbers and people to contact and senators and they gave you some walkouts that are coming up. Um, this Saturday, the twenty-fourth, there's gonna be, um, a walk at the Walkway. There's walks all over, um, big cities in New York to DC to LA. So it's, um, really cool that they didn't just provide this, you know, important impactful message, but they gave you opportunities and, um, how to, how to take action yourself. Um, and also, as the middle school, appreciating all of the students that participated in the high school and middle school walkout and taking this opportunity to discuss that conversation. Um, I also wanted to just say that I love, I love, love, love having the student of the month. I think it's really important, I had the opportunity of visiting Quinn at her school, um, for her initiative with the same choose, so, um, congratulations to Quinn, Brody and Lex says they're all really great students. I don't know them all personally, but I think they're all, um, phenomenal. And then happy spring break.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dean? Thank you, Dean. Okay, um, under business and operations, uh, tonight we're gonna have, uh, we have a couple of, uh, resolutions on the table to move a project that the support services have been talking about over the last, uh, couple of months. And we have some members of the community that have joined us as part of the support services. We have Larry Raddick, Ralph Smith, um, Mike Reed, I don't believe Fred D'Amato or Alan Dan Bodegar is here this evening. But they were, they were part, actually Mike Reed was part of the original seventeen point five, uh, project and he served on the board. And the other, uh, community members were involved, uh, as you remember when we, uh, initially put out the twenty-five million dollar, uh, project and it got defeated. We elicited, uh, some community members to come on board to help, uh, steer us in a direction that they felt that the community would support. Uh, so we brought the, a good, a portion of those committee members back into this, uh, project to give us some feedback and some direction. And I think overall, um, through our support service meetings, we've come to a, a conclusion that, uh, this is, the timing is right for us to move forward with another capital, uh, project. So I'm gonna let Louise kind of just give you a little bit of background as far as the impact to taxpayers and where we are and how we move forward from, from this point and then we can have some more discussion. Louise?
I just have a, a couple of quick points that we've continued to discuss. We have, in the nineteen-twenty school year, we will no longer have a debt payment of about two point one million dollars. Now, we are, um, getting some new debt from this seventeen and a half million dollars, which you may be aware of based on it's being budgeted in the eighteen-nineteen budget. But so, it, um, there will be a decrease in the amount of debt and associated building aid attributable to that. And we have this amazing opportunity where we have a lot of work that still needs to be done. And there's about twenty items. Um, most of these items are safety items. Some of them are, um, maintenance systematic renovations, things that need to be done, um, a little bit of program in there. So these are a, a small group of items that we recognize and agree need to be done and, um, we're looking for the board and to allow the board and the community to weigh in on whether they think, um, that this is the right thing to have. And then do you want to add something?
So, you know, you just see the great students that we have and that's why we're here. It's all about kids at the end of the day. Inspiring the best possible educational environment at a price that the taxpayers can support and afford. And, uh, we feel that this project does accomplish that. It'll maintain our, uh, you know, our, our tax base, so we're not gonna go, we don't up and down. Because it's just like your house, you know, if you ignore the maintenance on, on anything, on your house or on your car for many years, you're gonna be hit with a big bill that, uh, you know, then you get a little bit of sticker shock. But this is, you know, when you maintain and or make repairs along the way, really at the end of the day, it certainly is more economical. And again, remember that we do get, uh, you know, a, a very good, a healthy, uh, percentage back on these projects from the state. So, uh, you know, this is, we, we do have an opportunity here. It is a, a small window opportunity because we do wanna vote on this in May. But we, it is eight million dollars, there are about twenty different items, as Nurse Lynn said. It's, it's health and safety items. Some of the things are, uh, lighting outside, uh, other things are, you know, air quality, which is all health and safety. That list is on the website for the public to view. Uh, we have not yet put numbers to all those, but again, we look at the eight million dollar, uh, project and those would be the items involved in that project.
Can I just add one more piece? I'm sorry. So if, if, let's say that some of these items become irreparable and they break through the course of the year. What happens then is the district needs those items as an emergency item and we need to repair them and we pay a hundred percent of that cost with the general fund budget and then there is no aid. So the way the structure is set up in New York State for the capital project is you need to have voter approval, um, and this is of course the way we're presenting this starting tonight on the agenda, first approved by the board, then supported by the voters and then the building aid follows. But if it's not done in that manner, you lose the opportunity to receive the, uh, New York State revenue, which we refer to as building aid. So that's, that's why, um, we presented it in this fashion.
Louise, what percentage is that typically?
It's close to seventy percent.
Covered by the state?
Yes. Yes, and it follows the debt schedule?
So, I mean, if you recall, uh, probably three years ago, we, we initiated a capital reserve fund and we've been squirreling money into that account over the past, uh, several years. So that money will also help offset the impact to the taxpayers. But remember that we had to go to the voters to establish that capital reserve. We also have to go to the voters to utilize that, that money. So, uh, that's part of the, of the resolution for tonight. Uh, we also have here this evening our current, uh, professional design, uh, company, Ashley McGraw. Uh, we have Pat and, and Nick in the back. So if there's any questions the board wanna ask them as far as, uh, you know, the process and how it moves forward, uh, you're more than welcome to ask. If any of the committee members wanna, uh, say a little something about, uh, the project, you're more than welcome and any of the board members have questions for committee members, uh, ask them a few questions. Before we move through the process of doing the approvals and vote on the proposition that we want to, uh, the capital proposition that we want to put forward, I wanna make sure that the board is clear and understands, you know, why we're moving forward in this direction. It has been somewhat fast-tracked, but, uh, I think the timing is there. We have the needs and I think this is the appropriate time to, to move forward with it, so. If you have any questions, be free to, you know, ask us and hopefully, so the tenant, uh, business official and, and you and the committee members can, can help you out.
I have just a quick question, just in terms of technicality of how it works. So we need to get approval to use the money that we've put in that capital fund and we also need to get approval for a capital project. Are those two separate votes?
No, it's all, it's all wrapped up.
All of them.
That's right. B is the proposition to a certain...
But it'll be split up that way, so the language would be there for hopefully the voters to, to realize that we're, we're taking some of that capital reserve money to offset the impact plus the balance would be the, the bond.
Right, I just was, wasn't sure if somebody could vote for one and not the other, but it just wrapped together.
And, and it's, it's a little unusual for us going forward with a capital project that may vote, so, I mean, we have to realize that we have our budget, our normal vote budget vote. We have our bus proposition and now we're gonna have the capital project, uh, proposition on the ballot, so. Uh, there are three areas that the voters have to look at, decide if they're going to approve or, or not. I think it's our job now, if this does move forward, and I know the committee will help support us in that direction, to, uh, educate the community of the value of the project, the value of the, the bus proposition and also the value of the, uh, budget vote too. And also, we have three, uh, board members up for election. Board seats up for election, excuse me. Any questions?
I think the, uh, it's just important for me to, uh, communicate that this comes on the recommendation of bond council, I believe. Bernie Donigan, when he was here, uh, last month or a few meetings ago. Basically, this is a strategy that schools are employing because it will, it will be, you'll be able to do a bond project at a minimum, if any, impact to the taxpayer because rather than retire that debt, which is always a good thing, you really just carry that amount across. And in this particular situation, the amount is eight million dollars. So while, uh, public approval is needed, there's very little impact to the current tax rate. And that's why we're looking to do it.
The, the other bonus too is that we're picking up a lot of the items that got cut from the first time around from the original subject. So, uh, I don't, I would, I dare say we're not picking up everything, but we've gotten quite a few of those items.
Yeah, it'll allow to fill some gaps that were left by the capital project that's still going on.
And I think more importantly, it's sure that, you know, the safety, uh, and health of, of, of the district. Uh, I think we're gonna, you know, improve on that, the health piece of it because quality of, of, uh, air quality in, in all our rooms are important and I think that's gonna be touched upon. We're gonna do a little bit more expanding into our, our safety piece because I think that's very important for the, the community to know that, uh, our current capital project has, uh, done a great deal to the safety of our students. a great deal to the safety of our students and staff with what we implemented as far as secure vestibles and other things, our card access to all the buildings. We're just gonna expand on that a little bit with this project, too, to enhance that. And like Tom and Louis said earlier, that it's a health and safety proposal. So moving forward, I mean, we have a couple, we have our main proposition, but then we have the SECPRA review. And if anybody needs some explanation, maybe Nick or Pat, you can kinda explain that process to the board and why we're, you know, we don't have to go through that review. Do you like to do that?
Sure.
Nick Signerelli from Ashley McGraw.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. So with the SECPRA process, it's called the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and basically you have to determine that you're the lead agent. You're a school district, you determine yourself as the lead agent. And there is, because of the kind of work that you're doing on that list of 20 items, it is called a type 2, because it's not impactful to the environment or to this Environmental Quality Review Act. So that's what you're voting on. And then, of course, you're also voting on the date and the quantity, you know, the amount of the project as well.
Okay. Thanks, thanks. Any other questions? Ready to move it forward?
Ready to move it forward. I mean, there are questions, but they're on our current project, not this work. I didn't know Ashley McGraw was prepared to see that.
If you need an update. Okay. The business and operations of SECPRA. Whereas the Board of Education and the Highland Central School District is proposing a construction improvement to end the reconstruction of various school district buildings and facilities, site work, and the acquisition of original furnishings, equipment, machinery, or apparatus required for the purpose for which such constructed and reconstructed buildings and facilities are to be used. And whereas the proposed project entails the construction, maintenance, repair, replacement, reconstruction, and/or rehabilitation involving notes substantial changes or expansions beyond 10,000 square feet of existing structures and/or facilities. And whereas the proposed project is a routine activity of the school district, and whereas the board has considered information and documentation which describes the design and intent of the project. Now therefore, be resolved the Board of Education of the Highland Central School District, based upon the records before it, including the general, specific, and detailed knowledge of the board of the proposed project, and other the applicable standards of New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. And six section, part 617.5 hereby determines that the project is a type 2 action, and that no further action is required to satisfy the requirements of SECPRA. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Sue, second by Tom. Discussion. All of the favor? I oppose. So carry. And now we'll move forward with the capital project proposition. Again, the reason why we're doing it tonight, this is our deadline to have it approved to be able to meet the ballot requirement, or the date requirement for placement on the May 15th ballot. Be resolved the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent presents the following proposition to be presented to the voters at the annual meeting of the school district to be held on May 15th, 2018. Shall let the Board of Education be authorized to construct improvements to and reconstruct various school district buildings and facilities, including necessary site work, acquire original furnishings, equipment, machinery, or apparatus required for the purpose for which such buildings and facilities are to be used and pay incidental costs related thereto at a maximum estimated cost of not to exceed $8 million. Two, expand such sum for such purpose. Three, expend $425,000 from the capital reserve fund. Four, levy the necessary tax thereof to be levied and collected in annual installments in such years and in such amounts that may be determined by the Board of Education, taking into account state aid received and the amount expended from the capital reserve fund. And five, in anticipation of the collection of such tax, issue bonds and notes to the school district at one time or from one time to time in the principal amount not to exceed $7,575,000, and levy a tax to pay the interest on said obligations when due. Please take further notice that after said propositions shall appear on the ballot through the voting machines in the following abbreviated form. Shall the Board of Education be authorized to construct improvements to and reconstruct various school district buildings and facilities, including necessary site work, and acquire original furnishes, furnishings, equipment, machinery, or apparatus at a maximum estimated cost of not to exceed $8 million. Expend $425,000 from the capital reserve fund, levy a tax to be collected in annual installments, taking into account state aid and the amount expended from the capital reserve funds, and issue district obligations in anticipation thereof in an amount not to exceed $7,575,000. Be further resolved that the district clerk is hereby authorized and directed to include notice of such proposition and the notice of the annual school district meeting. Be further resolved that this resolution takes effect immediately. I will ask our district clerk to take a vote.
Okay, I'll state your name and just say either yes or no. Heather Welch?
Yes.
Ed Mizell?
Yes.
Mike Pacaxias?
Yes.
Debbie Pagano?
Yes.
Sue Gilmore?
Yes.
Tom Miller?
Yes.
Alan Barone?
Yes.
Okay. That's all in favor, 7-0.
Thank you.
And now, I guess a motion needs to be made, or no, because it's a roll call?
Yes, that was a roll call.
That was a roll call.
Yeah.
Okay. We have one other item on our business and operations. Reactivate our extra club account in the art club at the high school. Be resolved the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent approves reinstating the Highland Middle School Art Club for the purpose as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Beth, seconded by Heather. Discussion.
That was great. More opportunities for students.
All of the favor? I oppose. So carry. Sarah?
Right. Well, even with snow days, it's been pretty busy. I also wanted to commend our students for the way in that they observed the March 14th walkout. The event of the high school was completely planned by the students. They really organized themselves, they, in conjunction with the administration, but we were there more to support and to keep them safe, really. But they did a beautiful job, and I was so impressed. I told you this in the, in an email, but I wanted to also let the public know that the level of respect that the spectators or the protesters showed for the students that were doing the presentation and the speaking was just truly touching. I was very proud of the students for how they behaved. I mean, they, they walked into the gymnasium, they sat down, they listened, they clapped at appropriate times, but they really kept a very respectful atmosphere. So I want to thank the students who participated. Also, the band and chorus concerts were great fun. It's always, I love seeing all of the different levels playing together. I think that's a great opportunity for our younger students to see where they can go, and also just to watch the change, the progression. And definitely a huge shout out to all of our band and chorus teachers for the work that they do, and to the family members who support many hours of work on the part of our students. So that's great. And let's see, what do we have? Summer Academy, we met today. We have a teacher who is going to begin working on his administrative certification. He's going to act as the administrator for our summer academy that we've done in the past. We did not do one last year because of all the construction. We really just didn't know where we would be able to have it. So we're using this one-year break as an opportunity to really redesign what that program looks like. It's going to be a two-week program of longer days than we had in the past, but really focused around a common theme and looking at inquiry-based learning. So taking a theme and looking at it from the direction of ELA, math, science, social studies, hoping to include some trips as well as some visitors in. They're looking at, as we say, wildlife in the Hudson Valley, essentially. And we're also hoping to, much like we did last year with our E&amp;L program, to work with, I don't remember the name of the church in town. There's a church that does a summer lunch program for students, and they worked with our E&amp;L program last year, but we should be able to provide lunch for all of the students that are, that participate in the program. So that's a great addition, I think, to that program. So we had our first organizational meeting today to really talk through our schedule and start thinking about who should participate in this. The purpose of this is to support our more struggling students, and it's a way to give them a little bit of a bump through the middle of the summer, so that they don't show the reflation they normally will. It's very different from the year-round program that Patrick was talking about. This is directed at more of our tier-three students, as well as some of our special education students, that kind of thing. So we're working on that. I'm very excited about the idea of really changing the dynamic of the program overall. And the last thing I wanted to talk about, we had our instructional council meeting last week, which is all of our grade level coordinators and department chairs. We looked at the new science standards and looked at a couple of videos, and one of the videos really talked about the whole force behind, I think I've mentioned this actually before, the force behind the science standards is not to lose the wonder in education and science especially, that we can really work to keep our students wondering about how the world works, and be more engaged and interested in what we're doing in the future. So that was a great way to talk about learning, I think, last year. I think we'll leave it there. Any questions?
Sarah, for these programs where we might have the students here longer into the summer, or some point in the summer, do we provide transportation?
We are looking, we did not do that in the past, but my hope this year it would be to provide transportation as well. I think we'll have a much better participation rate. That's one of the hurdles that we had to face in our past program, is its regular attendance. It was difficult. So we're hoping we have to provide transportation for the E&amp;L students, and it really is not an extra cost to us to provide transportation, and for all of the students if we already have classes going out. So that's our plan, is to provide.
That's a good plan.
Yeah, I, I think it will be much more effective that way. You know, and some, it's difficult in the summers. The schedules don't necessarily work on the same schedule that parents.
But we also face that same problem next year with after-school activities, extra help and stuff like that.
Yeah.
As I said, did not have that transportation.
Absolutely.
And we've come to light of the shortages.
Mm-hmm. You're absolutely right.
Certain segment of students always got shut out, which is unfortunate.
And it certainly plays into the work that we've continued to do throughout the year on students living in poverty. And then it's just another way for us to support all of our members.
Yeah. Let's hope we can support it.
I don't see a problem.
Any other questions for Sarah?
Okay, to Sarah. Mr. Bon Jovi?
Mr. President? Yes. So I wanted to touch on security again and safety. Certainly, this is a topic on everyone's mind, again, unfortunately, with all the terrible things that happen in the country. So just to review again for the board and for the public, a walkthrough I did, so about two or three weeks ago now, I did a surprise inspection, safety inspection of each building with Chief Wage and with other Sheriff Tony Wead, who's an expert in school safety. And really looking at the different places where we could do some very expensive changes. But more importantly, a lot of the things were just procedural changes or small things we could tweak. So changing some of our procedures and our processes, locking doors that previously weren't locked. So again, the door being, the door is now locked to the admin building. And that's not to keep the public from coming to the superintendent. That is to protect everyone. There is a sheet right there that has the phone numbers. We are presuming that most people do have a cellphone, so that they can call the office that they need to go to in the admin wing. That is all, instead of just waiting for the cards to come, which they are, so card reader system, cameras, it's all coming. I mentioned the smart school money, but, you know, we didn't wanna wait for that. We can't wait for that. There's also a number of undisclosed things that we've done that, you know, for safety reasons, I really shouldn't say these are some other things we've done, but I can assure you there were, there were other items that were changed, I know procedures that were changed, just including the awareness of all the staff to carry, having their IDs, carry their keys with them, make sure their doors are locked. You know, there is certainly a balance that you have to have. This is a school district, and this could be a long debate in many venues as to, you know, to what lengths do you go? And again, I mentioned it the first time when we started talking about this, it's about the relationships, though, and it's about people, having our security people there and our secretaries and support staff right up front. They know who, they know who belongs, they know who doesn't belong. That's a big part of it. And certainly having our, you know, support people in guidance to know, and the teachers to make us aware, you know, what students might need that extra support. And that's all a part of school safety. So I continue with the lunch with soup this week, and one of the things I'm gonna add to the topic is asking the students, you know, about safety, do they feel safe? We want them to feel safe when they come to school. Schools would be one of the safest places they could possibly be, and I want to know if the students do feel safe. I'm gonna be answering right now, Dean, but I'll be asking, because I'm meeting Thursday and Friday with the rest of the student council. This, on the board of general, we're just approving its official calendar change. Monday is a bit of a very unique situation this year, which the public understands. So we went over our snow days. One of the days that was a snow day because it was the day the teachers had to report was the day of the parent-teacher conferences, which I believe is March 2nd. So it was, teachers were gonna be here from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m., no students left for the purpose of parent-teacher conferences. Now, we, I don't control the snow, believe me. So we did have a snow day that day. So once we went over last week, we need to make up a day, but actually, we also need to make up the parent-teacher conference day. So it kind of, it all worked out nicely, that everything was even, by having Monday the 26th, Monday, be parent-teacher conference day. Teachers will be here from 8:00 to 11:00. There'll be no students in school that day, and then the teachers will go home after that. That will keep the teachers even with the number of days in their contract. It'll, will make up the snow day. Now again, if we have other snow, which I'm sure we won't, that would then impact, and we would have school the next day. We would have to have school on the 27th with students and attendance. You should never change and forget why you have snow days and two-hour delays or even three-hour delays. It's about safety. So even when you're out of days, I'm not going to change what I do, my responsibility to keep everyone safe. And would we be more likely to possibly, if the timing was correct, to use a three-hour delay? That'd be possible, to try to preserve that day. But at the end of the day, it's to keep everyone safe. That's why you have any snow day. So we will see what happens. No one, we don't know what the weather's going to bring. And I'm running out of cute little Bon Jovi saying messages, so I gotta start thinking of new ones. Also, on the 26th, HSA will be in, that is our required date now, and they will be doing some daily activities with Mrs. David Lemick and myself leading those. There's some team-building items and new There's some team-building items and some other items, like kind of talking about school improvement. We also were able to get Trooper Frank Better in that day. He'll be presenting, though a few members of HSA have seen, I believe most have not seen this presentation. And that is recognizing signs and symptoms of drug abuse. Because they are our first, you know, they're on the line. They see the kids as much as anyone. So we're all part of the same teams, and why couldn't we have the same presentation? So it'll be, I think it'll be a very informative day and an enjoyable day. So that's all we have.
I would like to, for next year, see if we can build a couple more days into the schedule so that we are not taking days away from vacations.
I meant to talk about, so the calendar, I'll be getting the calendar. We'll be meeting with the principals, and I'll be meeting with the HTA, HSA presidents to get their input on next year's calendar. So again, BOSI gives us the calendar, we then take that calendar. Each school district is never exactly matched up with BOSI's because depending on the culture of the school, depending on kind of traditional days all different districts have, they don't always match BOSI's a hundred percent. We are looking at that. I don't want to make any promises, but I think we've found some unique ways to build in the time so that if we go over, it's not as impactful because, you know, when your first give-back day is the first day of the break, I understand, you know, people do make vacation plans, and that kind of puts a kink in it. But no, we're going to absolutely look at that to try to find unique ways. I still got a few trips up my sleeve to try to have the correct number of days, but to do it in a way that will be less impactful to everyone.
Yeah, I mean, vacation's vacation, and sometimes people get forced to make some difficult decisions.
Right, so I understand. Yep, absolutely. But as soon as I, can we get that, I want to get that to the board plenty of time before the board meeting where you have to approve it. So if you have any questions, we can talk about it. Great, thank you.
I have a question for Chief Superintendent. On the new business, this question for the schedule of April Board of Ed meetings. Our next meeting is scheduled Tuesday, April 2nd, no, April 3rd.
April 3rd.
April 3rd, I said 2nd. April 3rd. It's coming off the spring break, and I don't believe we'll have our board package ready in time for us to review in ample time. So I'm looking at trying to push that meeting either to the next Wednesday, Thursday, or the following week, any day the following week, but attempt because it's National Junior, National Honor of the Party. So I know I've got some feedback that everybody feels the fourth is doable, Wednesday, the 4th. I don't know if our district clerk will have ample time to put everything together and have it out at least the day before. Would it be out on Monday? Yeah, on Tuesday. So I'll only give you one day to preview our board package.
I mean, Tuesday mid-afternoon, I mean, Monday, you know, I'll be...
Is that okay with everyone? Yeah, I think Wednesday, the 4th.
Dean pointed out the fifth is four nights, so of course we can...
You can enjoy the... Azim, yeah.
I mean, it could, yeah. Monday I'll be, you know, getting all the stuff in.
Yeah.
So by Monday, late night or, you know, yeah.
We're okay for the 4th?
Let's do it.
Wednesday, the 4th?
I can make Wednesday, yeah.
All good, all right. So our next board meeting will be Wednesday, April 4th. Thank you. Board of Education Policy 7641, our first reading. It's the diploma credential option for students with disabilities. I don't know if you have enough time to read it all. We'll hold it for our second reading. You have any questions right now, maybe?
Is it anything different? I do have a question, I'm sorry. Is it anything different than what we do now?
No, we reviewed what was in there to make sure that, yes, the better...
It drives what we do now.
Shouldn't be, yeah. The state has come out with stuff over the last couple of years that have driven this. So they gave score requirements and appeals, and it should just align with that.
Is this a new, this is one of the new policies that you were talking about before? That we have to have?
We do have to have this, yes. And it is in response to changes that have been made in some of our requirements.
They love to...
It's updated, essentially.
Okay, okay, it's just I was looking for the...
I mean, it's the first reading, right? So it's not...
Yeah, it's the first reading, we still have a second. If you have any questions, they could bring it back to the council.
I'll look up our current policy. I just want to see, you know, the differences.
And this one has been reviewed by...
Margot, yeah. I'll double-check. I don't know that there were a lot of red lines in what she sent. So I'll double-check those. Usually I try to send them to you, the changes.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I'm...
Okay, we'll move it to second.
Do other schools in Ulster County also offer this full complement that this policy will?
They should be. I can't answer what other schools...
Does the policy hold anything that's above and beyond what the law requires?
Should be aligned with what the state came out with.
Yeah.
Follow the same exact criteria.
Okay, thanks.
Does that answer your question? I'm not sure if I'm understanding your question.
I'll make it more clear by the next meeting, since it's our first review.
Okay, moving on, our snow day makeup. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon recommendation, superintendent approves the following data to be used as makeup day for HTA for purpose of parent-teacher conference, a half a day, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. on Monday, March 26, 2018. And HSA will be a full day. No students will be in attendance. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, seconded by Heather. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so carried. Under all business, two items. I think we should have a little discussion on our budget proposal. And then also, I believe, some board members have questions in regards to our current capital project. I know Pat, Flynn, and Nick are here. If you have any questions and updates that you want from them, I'm sure Pat can fill you in.
I think with regard to the budget proposal, you know, the last meeting and also current local article with the 4.99%, and I figured that was a budget, budgeting. I don't believe we were... I want to clarify in future meetings that this still falls within a regular budget vote, a 50-plus-one. And in my, and I know we'll get this on the agenda, you know, we're not... Several discussions between now and adopting a budget, that a lot of that 4.99% was voter-approved. So part of that's capital project, the other part is the buses that we're going to buy that were approved. So a big piece of that 4.99% is voter-approved work that's in the budget process. There were some other rising costs. And though it wasn't Louise's presentation, I just, I was asked a lot about it in the community because in looking at our neighbors, I went there, budget-to-budget increase, and it happened to be less. So it really coincided with the time that I am running for reelection, and I was going around getting signatures or, you know, doing everything I need to do. But it was just a, you know, something I heard again and again. So I did report back to the board administration that, let's put some additional information out there so people understand that 4.99% a little better. And I just wanted to provide that clarification for now. I'm sure Louise will do a much better job than I just did in meetings to come.
So could I, you know, related to Mike's issue, and I emailed him this afternoon. If we didn't have this first debt payment, we probably wouldn't be looking at a levy of 4.45%. We wouldn't be looking at it.
Right, there are a couple of factors there. If this debt had been delayed another year, and according to Chuck Basch and Bernie Donigan, it couldn't be. But remember, we approved this project in '14, and now it's four years later. So you could only have short-term debt and not get any principal for so long. But if this had been delayed until the 1920s, we just talked about how that debt fell off, we would not be looking at this little spike. But having said that, I have a couple of things I want to say. Two, or one, I'll start with this. We've planned for this all along. When we went out to vote back in '13 and '14, we talked about the fact that this was the most, or the least costly way to get this much work done. But there would be a slight spike in one year. And as we talked about, you know, we talked about debt service and different ways we would mitigate this. So this is really, you know, it's kind of been the plan. It's just this is the year. So that's one piece of it. Hopefully, the community will remember that, you know, this was the least costly way to do this work, and we got a lot of work done, and, you know, we're not paying a hundred percent of it because we're getting building aid on it. But the second piece of that that is driving it is that until we get these projects, which there are, I don't know, I think 12 project numbers by SED standards, until we get these closed out, the building aid will not start to run. You know, if you look at this, you know, on your own home mortgage, you know, maybe one year you do $20,000 worth of work, and then the next three you do none. It all nets to the same number cumulatively. But for now, I am being very conservative because I'm not sure if we are going to get a full building aid. I'd always rather tell you we have more money and we were successful than, hey, we didn't get it done. So those are the two things. You know, it's what we planned for. We knew it was going to cost us some money. It's not costing us as much as it could if we didn't have a successful capital project vote. But this is the year. And I just want to say one more thing because I'm always looking at data and where we stand in relation to our counterparts. And I don't want to throw any of our neighboring districts that are school districts under the proverbial bus. But as small, there are three smaller districts in Ulster County. And if I put in a 5% budget increase, budget-to-budget for Highland, and I, there's lots of figures about statewide average increases for, you know, budgets across the state. If I put in an average number of, say, two and a half there, we are still ranked lower. You know, their budgets than our per pupil spending. So we're still doing a great job. It's just this is the year. And I don't want anybody to think that we're not.
And it's really perception, you know, that...
It is perception.
So I just want to get it out there.
Yeah. I mean, if you have a $40 million budget and you have a 5% increase, and you have an $80 million budget and you have a 2% increase, that 2% sounds really good, but you've already had a higher number to start with. So, you know, and we know when we looked at the capital project list four years ago, we had a big list of stuff, you know, we had to address that. So I think we've been very fiscally responsible. I don't want anyone to think that we've not been. But it is just the year that some of it's hitting us, so...
Now, if I can just follow that question up. So I understand that we've got the first loan payment coming due, and I knew there was going to be a bump more these years.
Yes.
So let's say next year. I would assume that next year, the year after that year, if all things remain equal, we're going to be back to...
A level debt schedule, yes.
Right, so we're not going to see it. And so I think the public can understand that.
Yes. The reason for that, just so I can elaborate a little bit, is because until you have level debt, right now Bernie Donigan is, you know, taking vans, bond anticipation notes, of short-term borrowing instruments. And it's not necessarily for exactly a year. It may be, you know, 380 days. You know, it's based on when we needed the money for construction. So they're lining up the interest payment. Generally, those are a little higher. You know, we've talked about the dormitory authority. Once we go to the dormitory authority, we're going to have a lower interest rate. Anyway, once it all lines up, it will be very level structured debt. We're just in the year where we're trying to line it up. So I hope that answers your questions. It doesn't really fix it, but I think it helps give some perspective.
I'm not surprised at all. I'm not, I'm not.
And if there's any questions, I'll have to...
My only concern is to try to, you know, communication is a big piece of this, to get the voters to understand, yes, we have a budget-to-budget increase of 4.99%. There's no gap here. Our revenues and our expenditures need each other. But I think, is there anything in that budget that our administrators can come to us and say, hey, we're going to start a new initiative? We've got new programs in line? That we can at least get that out to voters that, you know, this budget is strictly not a rollover, and we're not implementing any new programs or any new initiatives, and it's just status quo? I think that's big, especially when you're trying to sell a 4.99% budget. I think the voters need to know what they're getting for that. I know there's increases in health, there's increases in the ERS and the CRF. All that, all that...
Louise made a good point before. Compare this to buying a home. And remember the old days where you had five years of interest only, and then all of a sudden it blew up? And then all of a sudden, you're faced with the payment. It just...
No, I understand that. I understand that whole concept. I understand it, but we have to, we have to be able to sell that to the 1,400 voters that come out.
Well, hopefully I'll have that answer once the state budget comes out.
I think we're a little, maybe a little premature right now.
Yes, I think it's a little premature.
Do you want to get where we actually are with it?
Where we, you know, too concerned to write big articles that says we're the highest person. Until we see the state budget come out and see what numbers we get so that we can say, yes, this is now the number, and here are some new programs that will be...
I think that's important.
I think it's a little premature.
Then on the page of 1715?
Yeah, we have some. We do have some time. We should know more, too. I mean, hopefully the state will know with an ongoing budget.
I know Nick and Pat came in to mention the draw, the draw, our design professional for our current project. And Pat, I know you're pretty much hands-on the entire project. Can you give us a little update? There's a little concern when Louise mentioned a little while ago that we haven't closed out any of our projects yet, so...
Any of our phases?
Yeah, or our SED numbers, which started in the summer, or actually the spring of 2016. Here we are, the spring of 2018, and we haven't closed out that spring, summer, fall of 2016 projects. Maybe you can give us an update on that?
So the project that you're referring to, we referred to as Phase 1A, and so that will be closed out in April with Bernie Donigan's on behalf of the district submitting the final cost reports.
So we're closing them out, for phases, or we're closing them out SED?
Well, both. But so, I mean, Patrick, if I could just help. So Phase 1A, there was a significant amount of work, but really the... And remember, this was the bids that were done that were for all buildings. So it wasn't like there was a contractor that could be closed out because one building was done. And I guess I think specifically about the middle school and the windows. That work continued through the summer.
So you have one general contractor that had all, had work at all the buildings, and then the last building they worked on was the middle school.
Well, what about the site project and the site electrical? Weren't they, shouldn't they have been closed out?
They will be closed out as well with it. They, it took a while to get all the paperwork.
But they have been closed out earlier than now.
They could have been closed out, but we couldn't have completed the SED final cost reports because the third prime had not been closed out.
I like, I like where, we're going to close out 1A and all of its components in April. Let's follow that thought. So we have a date that's set, or by the end of April, we'll have closed out all of 1A? That's your expectation?
Yeah.
Okay. Any reason why we wouldn't? Okay, any reason why we wouldn't hit that time, please?
Not what I see right now.
Yeah, not what I'm aware of.
And then there's a One B, let's go down the phases?
There's, there's actually three, three parts to One B.
Can't be easy, huh? Of course not, okay?
So, let's just talk about what One B is. One B, a lot of that work is still ongoing, and Pat, maybe you can be specific in what buildings.
Okay, so going into this summer, and at the middle school, they'll be doing kitchen work, some toilet room work. At the high school, they'll be doing some kitchen work. Also, you did authorize, which is great, the auditorium work for the lighting control system. Yeah, and also the additional flooring in the locker rooms. So, you have some, some work related to middle school and high school that'll be ongoing. The general contractor for the high school was also the general contractor for the bus garage. And so, until the high school's completed this summer, then we don't close out the bus garage either. The elementary school, though, we should be able to close that out, you know, actually before summer.
So, the only thing that I can think of, because again, I'm, I'm lumping One B together, is the roof work. But so, I think what I've heard is...
Thank you, we can't close out the elementary school because you rewarded the roof work to the same general contractor. Yes, so we're looking at November for Bernie Donigan to have all the, what we call closeout documents in order so that in December, they can submit the final cost report, if not soon.
So, One B wouldn't be closed out before December under any circumstances?
Okay, yeah, it's okay, all right.
The reason for that, and I just think this is important to state, I'm sorry, Pat, I know we're talking over you.
But we, we didn't know that.
We did, but so, One B had two components, and really the roofs were considered two, but they were bid together. So, the bid is tied, you know, so now we have a bid that has two different SED numbers. So, that's why that's problematic, but anyway, it's the way it was bid, we didn't know we were gonna delay and...
As long as it gets done within or under budget, it's not...
Right, and now you know why I've talked about deferring receipt of that building aid in the eighteen, nineteen year.
So, that was One A, One B, what else we got?
The roofs are really...
I believe, I believe you're, from what you're saying, you've spent your money, except for some contingency to get you through to the end.
If we just close out One A, will we get any building aid?
Yes, we will, yes. And I've assumed that, that we will get that, I don't see any reason at this point. I know there was work going on through this past summer, but now we're tidying it all that up and we should be able to get that.
When we talk about closing out a project, punch list comes before that?
Yes.
Or does punch list come after that?
Punch list comes, it's the, punch list comes right at the end of when substantial completion is declared. Usually that's when the space or part of the work is, is being occupied or in use. And if that work is staggered, you know, if there's work that goes on beyond, say, a typical summer, then the punch list goes on with that work as well until that work's complete. And often it takes, I'd love it if it would only take one review, but it often takes...
No, and I'm, and I'm familiar with the process, but, so punch list and all that stuff, no problem? By April, it's done?
Yes.
Okay.
That's One A.
Do we have, right, that's One A, so is, the district's good with that? There's no concerns with that, or is there some concerns that we don't need to talk about offline? I heard that punch lists were a concern, and I, I, I didn't get if that was a One A or One B or that type of thing.
Well, we're not at punch list yet for One B or the roofs.
Yes, we have issued partial punch list for One B, so, and, and they, they are getting responded to as they get done.
So, even though One B's not gonna be closed out till December, we have some partial punch lists now?
Yes, yes.
What phase are the security doors in?
In March, okay, that's good.
What phase are the security doors in?
Okay, so they, they are tied to the smart, your smart schools funding application.
Oh, so even the doors themselves?
Uh, the doors...
You know, the whole vestibule, they're not complete yet, are they?
The doors themselves are installed, however, the electronic hardware...
Oh, I know about the swipe or that, that's tied to the smart schools, but I mean, the vestibules themselves...
I think there's some doors there now.
That's tied to One B.
You got some doors?
And are they functioning, are they even functioning with that swipe?
They're, they're secure, but they're, but they're not, you don't have the electronic access.
Pat, on, on One A, we're hoping April of this year, that we'll have to have a complete closeout. Has all the punch list items been completed, all the closeout documents been received? Are you aware of where that's going to our CM?
That's, the, the closeout documents are going through, through, so...
And they're all received and everything?
Very, very close, yeah.
Even from, from the summer of sixteen, you still go back close on some of those?
Well, they did, yeah, they, they continued to do work on some of them this past summer, yeah, but yeah.
And when do you establish your one-year warranty from the contractor based on your substantial completion date?
Substantial completion date.
Now, the roofs will be done when?
Summer.
This summer, okay, and the G C will be here until completion?
Well, what Pat's saying, hopefully by December of this year, we should be closed out with everything.
Everything, G C will be...
All the warranties and all that thing.
Were, were we planning on going into executive session after this meeting?
I don't believe so.
I think I'm gonna recommend that even if, just for ten minutes, and I would ask Ashley's representatives to stick with it.
The one portion of your roof at the high school that isn't getting done, because it's not a roof, it's a big skylight and that's over the, over the library, which you have included in your list for the new...
Right, the new project, we put that on the...
Okay, anything else under old business? Anything for the welfare of the district?
Happy Spring.
Opening up the public comment.
Sorry for my voice, my name is Camille Doma, I'm a parent of two students in the district. And last week, there was discussion about technology in the district. And just a couple of comments for the board to consider, or a couple of considerations. Bring your own devices, just thinking about how do we monitor student use? And also, how do we, a lot of districts are going to computer-based testing, how do we administer their computer-based testing, monitor student use while respecting students' privacy on those devices? So, that was the first kind of consideration I'd like for you to consider. The second would be just thinking about technology programs at the high school. My son brought home a registration package a couple weeks ago, and there was no ledgers for ninth graders to the technology. So, just again, trying to get more ledgers for students. There's a lot of districts going to Cisco certification. Just want our kids to have that advantage when they leave the high school with technology.
Just a quick note on the computer-based testing.
Yes.
For that, we would use district devices for that. We do have enough district devices to be able to, to fulfill the CBT requirements, just a reminder.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, motion to adjourn to go into executive session for... Motion by Tom, second by Mike, all in favor?